So, good evening everybody and welcome to the Monday, February 11th meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Present.
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am pleased as punch to be here tonight, thank you. I do not have any appointments to make tonight, and that's going to bring us to our first and only presentation this evening, which is a presentation from the Eastchester Irish American Social Club, and they're going to talk about St. Patrick's Day Parade, I believe. Not sure who's going to start.
Good evening Honorable Mayor. My name is John Collins. I'm one of the people on the Public Relations Committee for the Eastchester Irish, and I am thrilled once again to be before all the esteemed trustees and the helpful people, the village attorney, the village administrator, and of course, Mr. Salvo, who as I have indicated is the only person who could keep me in line. So, thank you for once again having me here this evening. First, before I get started, Mayor Eklund, trustee, oh, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Giordano, I'm understanding that you're coming to the end of your terms, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the great work that you guys have done for Tuckahoe and beyond.
Well, thank you. We both appreciate that.
And to keep going with the thank yous, we're also very grateful for the continuous support, both with the board as well as the police department here in Tuckahoe, to support our parade. And it really wouldn't be the same if we didn't have Tuckahoe involved in the parade. As you know, the parade starts in Tuckahoe and works its way up to Lake Isle. So, with that, let me say to you, after that thrilling Super Bowl, XV, XV-15, for those who are into Roman numerology, we are on our 15th parade, if you can believe it, and this was the brain trust of long ago Jim Hendry and Tom Uvain, and they were the ones who brought this to fruition 15 years ago. And now we're in the trustee hands of Brendan Lynch and Mike Denning, and they have put together a great parade. But as I promised, it was going to be brief, so let me get right down to it. As they say in Ireland, I think, Is on mose don nev podrick en re ern ode? Which is supposed to mean that we hold this parade to honor St. Patrick. But this year, let me try this one more time, we're also Is on mose don podrick. We're also honoring a great man, Patrick Murtha. And Patrick Murtha will be up here in a few minutes to speak about the parade, which will be held on Sunday, March 10th, 2019, starting at 3:00 PM. Starts at ICS, works its way up Main Street, meets Route 22, and then follows up past, what's their main drag there? It goes up Route 22 all the way up to Lake Isle. So, what I wanted to speak very briefly about is Pat Murtha. Pat Murtha, as I often refer to, is the voice of St. Patrick's Day, of the parade. Pat does a wonderful job narrating and explaining to everybody everything that's going on. But Pat does more than that. Pat's involved, this guy from Meath, he's involved with the library, he's involved with the Eastchester 5K. The man is involved with every kind of sport, probably sports he probably doesn't even know much about, but he's willing to help out, and I'm happy to say that Pat has done such a remarkable job in Eastchester and beyond, that it's very fitting that when we have our parade, it's not just all the bands, we also have a lot of civic organizations, and it's not a mistake that this particular year, we have so much of an outpouring from all the different sports organizations that want to be out there to pay tribute to Pat. Now, most years, Pat would be featured as the voice of the parade, but this year and tonight, we're just going to feature him. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn things over to our Grand Marshal, Pat Murtha, and he's going to tell you a little bit more.
Thank you guys.
That's quite an honor, quite an honor.
No, the honor is all mine, Steve. First of all, how many years have you had to put up with me at this party?
Fifteen.
Were you there all fifteen?
I've been here for 15 years, yeah, yeah.
Well, listen, I have to echo John's sentiments, and I did not realize that you had to put up the brutal punishment of myself and John double teaming you, or the redhead from Mayo, Mr. Uvain. But Tuckahoe has been tremendous to us, and Tom, I want to echo again, John, you guys have done, how much Tuckahoe's changed? As funny as it was, driving up here, I drove down Main Street, and on the corner of the building, it says 2003 on that cornerstone, right across the street from that wonderful community program that we have here. And I'm proud that I was part of the Eastchester 5K, and we were able to give funds back to ECAP and to purchase that van and to see our name on the van now. But also, it reminded me that St. Patrick's Day Parade was actually born in this town, and 2003 was the year it was born, ironically enough. We were at a Christmas party with about, at that time, a small group in ICS Parish, down below with Tony Colavita, Tom Uvain, there was a couple of others, and Jim Hendry and many more, and the chatter, you know, grew as the beers, you know, went down smoother. And toward the end of the night, we were all very brave and feeling fearless that we could take on this town and show this wonderful community what the Irish were all about. Of course, we woke up the next day and said, "What the hell did we do last night?" But we took it on, and Tom and Jim made our first parade an incredible success. We had no clue what we were doing, didn't know how it was going to come out. We started off with four units, we had four pipe bands and one Irish dance school who's still here, the Henry Dance School. And it was a magnificent day, beautiful weather, and the town turned out as it always does. I can tell you, as an immigrant coming to this country, to be accepted into a community like Eastchester and to be part of it. And I will tell you, and I talked to Frank, your people in this town, Chief Constanza, Frank, and everybody else have been phenomenal for us, they've been so helpful. And I can honestly tell you, I come from a very small village in Ireland of about, you know, 800 people when I was growing up. I was a farmer. You know, the community was about everything, was going to the pub, everybody knew each other. Well, Eastchester and Tuckahoe have made me feel like that since I moved here in 1990. And I'm sorry to get emotional, because I baptized my children in ICS, I've had confirmation there, I've been in front of you guys, people in this town. The reason I talk and the reason I'm as passionate about it is because I love this town, and I love the people I've met in this town. You always will be friends of mine, the guys, Steve, I've known you forever, we've attended funerals, same with Frank, he married a wonderful woman whose brother lives behind me, Anthony Cesareini and Gina. And there's such a wonderful cocktail in this town. And I'm telling you, I feel the warmth of Eastchester more than I feel the warmth of my hometown, I want to go home now, because similar to Eastchester, so many Dubs have moved out to me that we're no longer the Royal County, we're full of these blue Dubs, and for those who don't know, it's Dublin, the city, and they're all Dubbers, and we hate them. But I love this town, always have. It is such a huge honor to march on March the 10th. And for those of you who have never done it before, come on out, because it's a wonderful time, it's the start of spring. I'm joined this year by three wonderful honorees, Gary McLaughlin, Jerry McLaughlin, and Tom Byrne, and those three gentlemen have assisted up at ICS every year. And we've gone from four units in the first parade, four pipe bands and one dance school, to this parade this year, we'll have five units, much larger units than we had then, eight pipe bands, five brass bands, five Irish schools of dance, of which probably four of them are in this town. Gaelic Athletic Association, which is our, for want of a better word, soccer, but it's Irish football where you use the hands, county associations, and beyond. We have Boy Scouts, we have Girl Scouts, and I know for everybody who goes there, you see what it's like. I also like to think that the parade has brought out so much in this town, that the other parades, the other options, I mean, look at Columbus Day now, let's be honest, guys. Lake Isle and what happens up there, probably, I don't know if it have happened if the Irish hadn't come in and pushed that little button a little harder, right lads? And we love our Italian brethren, and we have bonded with them, and we do this Irish-Italian versus the East, sorry, the Eastchester-Italian versus the Eastchester-Irish golf outing, of which the money goes back to scholarships for the Italian club and scholarships for the Irish club, and it is a marvelous time. If you haven't come to it, it's the end of September, we always hit up in the Lake Isle, and you can see the camaraderie that has grown between our two, you know, very typical, we're Catholic, we speak English, you guys have a strange tongue to speak, but we're Catholic, hardworking, family-oriented people, some people like food, some people like drink, we won't go there still, we all know which one it is, but, yeah, some people like both. It has made this town, I believe, and parades are one of those things that you can have or you can't have. Our parade operates with no funding from within the town. The Columbus Day Parade has benefited the town because of the income from that phenomenal event that happens up there for those four days. So I think that both parades and the other parades that happen, which really need to be supported, as we know Memorial Day, Veterans Day, again, we've helped those parades make this town what it is. You drive down Main Street, that Main Street has changed a lot, right Steve?
Sure has.
Since we came here in 2004. It's a beautiful place, at Christmas, I have to tell you, I want to take a photograph because you look up that street and it feels like you're in Disney World. And Tuckahoe has that feeling, and that's why you guys are bringing so many people here. And, you know, I could raffle on forever, but you told me to be short, so this is about as short as I can get, lads. I just do want to say that I am marching in honor of the other 14 who were before me, and if you don't mind me mentioning it, some of those are Tuckahoe people, Father Walsh, who was the pastor of ICS in Tuckahoe, Mary and Phil Denning. I wish Mary was here to walk up the road with me, because my family and I honored Mary and Phil. Their family meant a lot to us, and when I moved to Eastchester and Tuckahoe, I saw what they did and how people enjoy them, and I miss Mary so much. Mary and Phil are from Tuckahoe, we had John Fogarty from Bronxville, Anne Hendry of the First Irish School of Dance, Dave Flannery, Mike Hines and Steve Carty from Mickey's, Emma Fitzpatrick, a wonderful man from Armagh, Tom Uvain and Jim Hendry, who started out this, was honored in the 10th, Joe Houlihan from Yonkers, your own Sheila Marcot, phenomenal woman, has been on that podium with me, I'll miss her on the 10th when I'm marching, and she's an amazing woman, does so much for this town too. Sean Mackin, for those of you who weren't there for Sean Mackin, what a story. I mean, this man, you know, fought for his country, battled to have freedom for Northern Ireland, has gotten much place, but Sean wants to see it finish, and in a peaceful manner. Sean had to do what he had to do to gain his independence, and he was just, his story was an amazing story of what immigrants have done for this country, and even a so-called, I would never call Sean this, you know, he was a fighter, he was a martyr, coming to this country, did so well, and have employed so many people. Then we had Margaret Colavita, Tony's mother, who's, as Frank McLaughlin said to Frank one day, and he said, you'll have to edit this, he says, "Jase, Tony, you're lucky your mother's from Ireland, because we're taking over." And that was after the first parade. Frank McLaughlin is no longer with us. And then there's the two Murthers, Helene Murtha, who spelt it the wrong way, M-R-T-H-A, Joe Dooley's wonderful wife, and myself. And I'm telling you, I'm emotional now, I will be super emotional that day, because to be honored, I came here as a kid with very little money in my pocket. I've got health, and I've got wonderful friends and family, and they all reside and live in this area. And I'll be forever indebted to Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville for making my life and my dream in the greatest country in the world as great as it is. Thank you all.
You said an awful lot, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we really, really are so pleased that we're going to march with you side by side and honor you on Sunday, March 10th.
I miss your face, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM, that's right.
Yeah, I want to start on the top.
Right on time, that's right.
eastchesterirish.org, for those of you who want to donate, who want to sponsor it, as I said, we run it all ourselves, and it's going to be a great time. You know, the winter this year has been not too bad, and I hope the spring, we'll hope the spring will be as good as the winter has been to us so far.
The Irish eyes will be shining.
Yeah, before you go, your message of compassion is too much for me. You talk about getting choked up, Patrick, I can't help but to get choked up. You know, we know firsthand of your hard work, kindness, and generosity. Every day, we see it driving around, you made a huge contribution to ECAP, those kids down there, they're very grateful, you made a big difference down there. And again, just seeing the van drive around, it's a constant reminder of, you know, the compassion that you guys have, and you're an asset to our town, and we love you here in Tuckahoe. Thank you so much.
Danny, thank you, and actually, you reminded me of one person that I think, Steve, every year, we've ended this, as I have asked you, with the men who sat in your seat, Steve Quigley.
That's right.
Steve Quigley, one of the few Irishmen that was up there, but a gentleman, you know. And again, one thing I'll say, lads, about small-town politics is I wish it wasn't, you know, it's about what you do for the town, and Steve Quigley, and you, Danny, and Tom, and Steve, and Greg, and yourself, what you do, we're all in it for the town, right, and for the villages we live in. It's not about our politics, it's about what we can do to make life better for our kids and for ourselves. And Steve Quigley was an absolute gentleman, and again, Steve, I'd ask for a minute's silence at the end of it, or moments of silence, and thank you, Danny. I love what I do, I do it with a passion, and I'll keep on doing it as long as I can.
Cheers, cheers.
Thank you, yes, looking forward to it very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to our agenda, and the next item on our agenda is public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is the public hearing to consider the adoption of the Marbledale Road design guidelines as an amendment to the village comprehensive plan. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Luizy.
In favor?
Trustee Andino. In favor?
In favor.
In favor. So, the public hearing is now open, we've had an awful lot of discussion over the last couple of meetings, and we talked about this issue at length at our last village board work session. And so the first thing we decided is that we're going to keep this issue open for a couple of months. We feel that it's important to let the general public have as much opportunity as possible to weigh in on this. I see some business owners here tonight, so we really need an architect, so we need to, you know, we really need to get some input on, you know, some of the elements that are in this suggested plan. So, with that, we're going to keep it open, and for a couple of months, but I first throw it out, is there anybody from the public who wants to speak about this? So, yes. Thank you for coming, Lenny.
Hello, welcome. I'm Mayor, members of the board, I'm Leonard Brandis, Brandis Architects. I have done numerous projects around the village, including, I have a dozen on Marbledale, including Fleetwood, Sentez Project, Leech Project, I have some projects for Rocco's Auto Shop, where we had the car wash, which he's put on hold for now, also PTI, which is right on the corner at the entrance to that, on the other side of the park, on Main Street, also Elcan Industries, which wasn't mentioned for some reason, but should have been mentioned in that report, which is behind the Cube Storage, right across from the DPW. Those are items that should definitely be mentioned. I'm here because I know I have other projects across from Holcombe, across from Rocco's, which also wasn't mentioned in the report, where it's an existing building, was an Italian restaurant, it had been an American restaurant, it's gone through many singles since I've been there. And now he's looking at doing some renovation there as well, so I've been involved in that as well. So, I am involved in the street, plus many other projects throughout the village. What I saw in the report is, I found a little disturbing to me, having worked on these projects and working in these areas, such as the east side, where they have recommended that we can go, it's 120 feet long, and we should be able to take 15-foot sidewalk, put a 45-foot building, then 60 feet of parking behind that, that's taking that whole thing, but it's not taking into account that that is a huge cliff over there. And on several of my projects, we've had to deal with that cliff, and that's extremely hard to deal with. You have residences from the town of Eastchester on the opposite side of that, and those cliffs start falling down. Even if I go down in the south end, even that Elcan Industries, that's why I'm bringing them up, because they're right there, and that's constantly causing problems with them. They have water runoff coming into their property, it's going into their building, because it's right near the edge. So to build that and to create, you know, 40-foot-high walls is going to be very expensive. On the other side, where I've been working with Rocco, on his project, where we've put it on hold for now, we have to put in piles to support a building. Now, these piles are going down 30, 40 feet, also a very expensive proposition in order to be able to work this. So my first problem is that they want to reduce the FAR, which is going to make this even more expensive, to go down to a 1.1, 1.2, where now at 1.6, I think it's going to be, 1.4 and 1.6 is going to be very expensive and very extremely hard for any builder or developer to work with. It's really reducing it, and if anything, it should be higher than what it is. Another problem I've had with the report is talking about the type of industry or product going in there. Having worked with a lot of the small industries here in town, including even Martine's Bakery, it's one of my clients, one of the big problems I'm hearing from a lot of my clients is that they cannot get people to work from the locals. They're bringing people in from other areas, from Yonkers now, because all the smaller housing, the middle-class and blue-collar workers can no longer afford to be in the new areas of Tuckahoe. But all of Main Street is now very expensive apartments, at, you know, $4,000 a month, $5,000 a month, they cannot afford it. And they are having trouble now getting people in position, PTI is complaining about that even, all my clients in this area. So my concern is that we're going to be putting in, they were saying to multi-use projects, well, the multi-use would end up being, well, maybe we can put in a grocery store or things like that, but what are you going to put on those other floors? Offices are not going to be worth anything. I'm converting even in Scarsdale Village right now, I'm taking offices and converting them into apartments. There is very little need for office space, you look all over Westchester County, huge glut on office space. To start producing more is going to be a problem. What we need is to develop this as housing, and it should be a mixed-use property. It shouldn't be just properties for commercial land. You're going to have a hotel built over there, where are they going to find the workers to even service this hotel? So, I mean, Tuckahoe has always been a good, middle-class and blue-collar working area, and yes, I agree that it's great to have these new apartments over on Crestwood, by this Crestwood Station, you have those new apartments there. All these apartments are filling up extremely fast, but they're not helping to support the people who work and live here, and the industries that are in the town. In fact, any more, you know, office space, as I said, nobody's going to want to do that anymore. It's just going to be undeveloped land, because there's really no reason to put office space anymore.
I'm curious if I can ask you, because you're in the industry, so in the market today, it seems that everything that's driven right now is all residential. Like, my businesses in Yonkers, and I see on the waterfront, you know, thousands of apartments that are being built right on the Yonkers waterfront. And so, and that's been for some years now, that it's all residential, residential, residential. And you've just talked about that too, that you think that there should be some residential allowances on Marbledale Road. When does that change? Like, what do you see, how does that change? At one point, it was all commercial, which is why we had, you know, we have had so much commercial. So, what makes that change, do you feel?
Well, I feel what's been happening is that people, like office space, like most of the office space that I've been converting in, say, Scarsdale Village, it's right within the village itself. And those were all small offices, where you had to have secretaries, you had to have back people working with you, they're no longer available, they don't longer need them, everything's done on a computer. So everybody's working from home, they don't need these office spaces anymore, and these are mostly the smaller office areas that you have. Medical facilities are working great, I'm working over in Eastchester, Eastchester Urgent Care, we've been very busy, and we're remodeling that area. But I'm also working in Scarsdale on new apartment spaces, actually within the village itself. I have proposals for that going out very shortly in the center of the town, as well as the town itself, on another section of town going right by the train station, is looking for apartments there as well. This is what's needed in the towns. If you go to Harrison, they're just building right now, new residential buildings. People can't afford to live in Manhattan, and these are wonderful neighborhoods where people are coming to. And that's why, like, over here on Main Street, they were able to fill up very fast, because they can't afford to be in Manhattan, they don't want to be in the Bronx, and this is a wonderful community, and people love it.
And they drove the prices up on those units on Main Street too, yeah, quite a bit.
Quite a bit, and that's what I'm saying, there's no workers, there's no place for workers to be. So having residential areas here, and there are residences on Marbledale, now right in the middle, and I don't see that really being mentioned so much, but right across from Rocco's, Fred Madonna, another one of my clients, by the way, who's asking me to look at his property there, is also residences. So I'm working all over this area, and I'm working with people here, so it's not a new place to me. As I said, the offices are just not going to work, I think, and nobody's going to invest in it. If we want investments, we really need to start bringing people in, and if you're bringing people, we can certainly do mixed use, because now we're going to need shops, tailors, pizza places, you're going to need, there's nothing there on Marbledale Road right now.
Right.
And, as I said, once again, you're going to have that hotel, who's going to service that hotel? And why can't we bring a nice area for people to come to? And we can certainly make nice residences, they don't have to be shacks, we're not looking for, you know, low income, you know, very low income, we're not looking for subsidized living, we're looking for people where people can live, and that's what people need right now.
So, this, just to kind of rehash what this document is, this is a study, it was a low-dollar study, it was a study that we had our local land use planner go ahead and prepare, and it was just, it was, it's called the Marbledale Road Corridor Study. And as we know, it's non-binding, so it's a recommendation by an urban planner who looks at a lot of different elements, and he has conversations with different community representatives, he might have talked to architects, I don't think he talked to you, I guess. And so, and with that, they go ahead and make a recommendation on what they think the future of the Marbledale Road should be. It's, of course, as I said, it's non-binding, it's sort of like our village's master plan, which is really a document that the, our land use boards are supposed to, as you know, they're supposed to go ahead and take into consideration things that were adopted by the village board of trustees in a master plan. So, if in a master plan it said you should absolutely never have residential on my street, which is on Upper Marbledale Road, however, it's a residential street. The master plan may say that, but the reality is if it's owned residential as a right, it's residential, I could build a house on my property, I have a house there, but I can't. So, where I'm going with this is that it's a recommendation, and one of the things that's come out of this conversation, so it's good to have the conversation, is that it's clear that, you know, we've, I've certainly talked about getting a new, an updated master plan, because ours is at least 10 years old at this point now. And this was supposed to just take a look at the Marbledale Road corridor, only because the hotel, we all believe, will be a, you know, a dynamic change, a catalyst for what's going to happen on Marbledale Road. And the reason why we didn't commission and revise or update a master plan is because it's 50,000 to 100,000 bucks, which, you know, we're scratching under the table, looking for a dime to go ahead and keep the taxes in check to where they are now. But it's clear in some of the conversation that we've had, I know I've talked to Rocco about this, and he's concerned about it, and I get that, you know? If I was a business owner on that street, I would absolutely, you know, feel the same way. And if I owned some residences on the block in that commercial area, I totally get it, I do understand it. So, I think in addition to keeping the public hearing open, one of the things that I know, I had a long conversation with trustee Luizy on this, is that the village really needs to take a hard look at maybe even borrowing some money to do an updated master plan, which would include a refreshed corridor study. So I think that's, because when you do, I remember when we did the master plan many years ago, I mean, it looks at every, I was shocked at how detailed and what they analyzed. So they're not looking at one street, they're looking at every square inch of your municipality. They're doing an analysis of how many people live here. You know, we talk about, well, we think there's a demand for housing, maybe we're overlooking the fact that there is too much housing stock, I don't think there is for a minute, by the way, but it's a real intense analysis of everything in your community, your police department, as to whether or not, and I think that's important. You know, we have a hotel that's come in, and our chief did a really thorough analysis of that, and he's comfortable that the staffing level that we, if we didn't reduce the staffing level, the staffing level we had would be adequate to maintain the business of operating 150-room hotel in your community. Our Department of Public Works, we have a lot of the guys who work for DPW here tonight, they're impacted, that work that they do is impacted based on whether you have more residences or more commercial, in one way or the other, I can't say which way it is impacted. So, a master plan, and an updated master plan, looks at all of those issues, and then it makes a recommendation, says, you know what, you don't have You don't have enough cops. You need maybe four more police officers, or you, you know, your DPW is understaffed. Or it tells you what your needs really are, and as well as it really studies your residential and your business, your commercial districts as to, makes recommendations as to what should be there, what should be in place. So, look, I'm glad that this corridor study actually generated so much interest because we've actually been talking about making some changes as a village board to our zoning code, and, you know, I don't think we've had anybody come to our meeting, so I'm very pleased. So thank you. And I was glad when I saw you tonight, so that's great. Thank you. Anybody else wish to, yes, sir?
Hi, Mike Giordano, sixty-two Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. A couple of things. One is, you're all familiar with the issue with the Con Edison gas moratorium. And I've been involved with meetings with the Business Council of Westchester. They're leading a group that's going to look at some solutions because that's a huge issue. As some of you may know, some of you may not know, by March fifteenth, if you don't have your paperwork in, you cannot sign up for a new gas line. They just say they don't have the capacity.
That's incredible.
It's, yeah.
Mind-boggling that they just woke up a couple of weeks ago and said, hey, guess what? We don't have enough gas.
Absolutely.
I can't get over that.
It's a big deal. It's going to affect development. I don't know how it affects the restaurant because it depends on the paperwork. Like, even if you get your paperwork in, it may be problematic. So that's just an issue I wanted to bring up that would concern anything like this. The other thing is, is that I really think that in, on Marble Dale Road, we have to, and I hope we can do this, obviously after the election, I think it would make sense, but really have an economic development committee because industrial space, even though I know it's zone commercial, industrial space is very valuable. It's really hard to get industrial space. Nothing's being built. Building moderate-income, multifamily housing is impossible unless you have forty-seven partners and twenty thousand loans. You know, in the Bronx, you try to do that, and you've got to have all these partners. You've got to have funding from the state, from the city, from the feds. It's extremely difficult. And then you also have to have, now they're having mixed use, so they have to have a retailer or whatnot, and you have to get that into the building. So it's very complicated. My thought is, there's a lot of good space there right now. Incorporating what the suggestions are, like, for Genard, when they split, that building could be R and D for a small company, a niche, high-tech manufacturer, a design firm. I don't want us to just discount that. I feel that we're pushing this retailer, this other stuff. But these, these kind of high-paying, high-tech jobs should be something we should be considering. And even though it's zone commercial, not, if, like, if a place wants to come in and do some R and D, a small R and D operation, that'd be cool. Now, technically, that might fall under industrial, but maybe it falls under commercial. But I just, I just don't want to see us go, okay, let's have more residential or more retail boutiques when we're already over-retailed as a society. I just want to put that out there, and I'll be fighting for that. And hopefully, the chamber is going to start being involved in this, and then when we have our new election in April, look at creating some kind of economic development, which could have architects and whatever. And I think we need more brain power on this because it's a very complicated topic because things are happening, the tax situation, the sales tax that we know they're going to raise at the county level. There's all these other outside forces that are pressuring us, so I just think that it might make sense to have more brain power from within the village, which I think we have a lot of.
One of the things that, in the years that I've been on the board, in the last ten years for sure, that I noticed that drives, that are driving forces against residential are the two school districts. You know, the minute there is a discussion about any kind of residential building that may come out of the ground, right away, there's a tremendous outcry from the school district saying, hey, our schools are overburdened. How can you build two-bedroom or three-bedroom apartments when, you know, we can't house all this? The kids are, you know, sitting inside the gymnasium. So, you know, that, that is somewhat of an issue, I think, for some developers who have looked at Tuckahoe as a potential development for residential, aside from the fact that what our current zoning allows, so. But I think there's other issues that are really going to come up in the future. You know, I won't, I won't be sitting on this board, but I can tell you that Columbus Avenue, that's going to be, you're going to see another urban renewal on Columbus Avenue. That's going to happen. There's a tremendous amount of interest from a lot of other people who have looked at Columbus Avenue. I haven't heard so much on Marble Dale Road, but, you know, Lenny and, you know, a couple of folks are here who have, you know, a real estate investment on Marble Dale Road. So that tells me that, you know what, people are thinking about the future of redevelopment. So I think that between Columbus Avenue, potentially more Main Street development, and something that may crack on Marble Dale Road, once that hotel is fully functional and up and running, and I think there's going to be still quite a bit more development. Tuckahoe is still amazingly very, very desirable, so. And, you know what, that's, makes it a pretty darn good place to live.
It's a good mix. We should, you know, don't want to go one way too much because then when you do that, then you have like nineteen pizza joints, and you have duplication that doesn't benefit anyone.
Well, we certainly don't need another pizzeria in town.
We have very good ones. We have all the pizza.
Yeah, we have a lot, too. Anybody else wish to speak on this? So, any of the board members? So I know we've kind of beat this horse to death a little bit. So we're going to keep this public hearing open on this issue for its, I see it probably staying open until, well, certainly long beyond when I'll be sitting up here. But I'll be actually keeping an eye on this from the other side of the microphone myself. So do I have a motion to keep the public hearing open?
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor, and that's going to bring us to the adoption of minutes, the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of January seventh, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor, and that will bring us to our first opportunity to address the board on anything that's on tonight's agenda. And, okay, with nothing there, we're going to move to resolutions. We only have a, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
On the agenda, we're talking about stadium lights.
Great, sure. Yep.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ed Conway. My wife and I own Eight Winslow Circle, which is adjacent to the Concordia soccer field. So we're here tonight to request the board to amend the zoning code to prohibit stadium lighting in Tuckahoe. We appreciate your past support. We understand that Concordia did cancel the plans for the stadium lighting, but we do want to make it explicit in the zoning code that these stadium lights, which can be sixty and seventy feet tall, are prohibited in Tuckahoe.
So we did talk, because we've actually talked about this in the past, and the reason why we haven't done anything since probably a year ago, I guess now it was, is that we are, this will be brought up, I'm certain, you know, I know that there's board members who are going to be here beyond this next election. And clearly, there's going to be a change to our zoning code. So what we do is, we don't change it on a monthly basis because it's quite expensive to actually make a change. So this, we've discussed with our village attorney. This will be one of those line items in a batch of changes that are going to be made. We recognize that there's very few places that could have stadium lighting. One would be the field that Concordia has. Any other parks, like the Main Street Park, which has, some people say that's stadium lighting. Village-owned property is always exempt from their own zoning. Village could build the Empire State Building if they wanted to on the Main Street Park property, as crazy as that sounds. So there's very few privately-owned property where it could apply, but it makes good common sense that even if maybe there was something that we can't see in the future in ten or twenty years, that maybe somebody knocked down a hotel and they wanted to put up a football field and put stadium lights, well, you know what, this would be in place at that point. So, but yes, it's on the, it's on the plan. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything on our agenda tonight?
My name is Richard Rodella, and I come for this issue because I lived for thirty-five years at the east, northeast corner of the soccer field. There's already a scoreboard there, and for a residential property, such development would be disastrous. I believe, after reading your zoning law, that it's not currently permitted by any language. The exterior lighting permission in the code does not cover this kind of lighting or this kind of night use. So I just want to kind of restate and reaffirm our position against that. And I don't think anybody from Concordia is here tonight, but I would ask them somehow to move that scoreboard, too. The field has got two roads. They should put it over there. They shouldn't put it in your houses. But anyway, I'm glad you're looking into it, and I appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely. Thank you. Rocco, come on, aren't you good? I know you're here for the same reason, right? Good, yeah, we have a lot of residents from that neighborhood, so thank you all for coming. Anybody else wish to speak on something on our agenda? Okay, all right, so that's going to bring us to our resolutions. And resolution number one is a little housekeeping. It's authorizing the closing of the following capital projects. Project two thousand fourteen seventy-eight, village hall walkway and parking improvements. Project two thousand fifteen dash ninety-two, the Main Street Park. Project number two thousand eighteen dash one hundred, DPW sanitation truck. And project number two thousand eighteen dash one oh three, sidewalk repairs. Do I have a motion to close out these projects?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Successfully done.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with the county of Westchester for the organic yard waste transfer program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number three.
Mayor, for those who don't know what that means, can we just explain that?
Oh, yeah, Frank, do you, Frank's here, right?
Yeah, Frank, could you just explain?
A little bit about the organic yard waste transfer program? This is an IMA that Tuckahoe will have, probably, I guess.
Yeah, this is an IMA that me and David had worked on a couple of years back. We presently compost our material with Eastchester, shared with Bronxville and ourselves, and we just want to be prepared in case something does happen and we need another place to go. We do have the county to look back on, and that's the only reason for the IMA.
And I hope my son's watching tonight. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Omeyer. So resolution number three is authorizing the following items as surplus for sale. A two thousand sixteen Dodge Charger, it's a four-door police sedan. Eighteen H seven fifty Motorola radios, and one multi-radio docking station. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So if anybody's looking, they're saying, wow, why are you selling a two thousand sixteen Dodge Charger? It's because the village of Tuckahoe, as well as pretty much every municipality, is moving to SUVs and getting away from cars. And we discovered that if we waited another year and put this up for sale next year, believe it or not, the price for the SUVs went up, like, I think David just said, seventy-five hundred dollars just in one year to the next, which we don't understand why. So we said, you know what, let's save seventy-five hundred bucks. We'll get a few more bucks when we sell this car now, and we'll save seventy-five hundred on the purchase of the new vehicle.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andy.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a memorandum of agreement with Local four fifty-six International Brotherhood of Teamsters effective June one, two thousand eighteen, through May thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So I'm going to talk about this a little bit. We have some of our employees here from Tuckahoe DPW. What we've done here is actually, we have settled their contract. We've extended it by three years, and we're very happy to do that. This was an offer that, we did a similar situation with the Tuckahoe Police Department. We feel that it is prudent to do this with DPW. What's good for the goose is good for the gander, as my mom always taught me. And it, you know what, it provides stability for village budgeting over the next couple of years. There are some things, we've been negotiating since last June, maybe even a little bit before that. So there's a few things that the DPW workers actually wanted that they're now not going to get because we basically just took the terms of their old contract and just moved it forward by three years. Likewise, there was a few things that the village is looking for that they're not going to get. So, but all in all, we feel that it's a responsible and fair thing to do for our men. I'd like to say our men and women, but there's no women who are currently working for Frank down there at DPW.
We're working on that.
I know that.
Right, Frank?
So, before I take a roll call, I just want to say, especially on a night when it's going to start snowing in about, oh, ten hours, I guess, or a couple of hours, you know what? The camera's panning on the folks in the back here who are wearing their yellow safety. It's now almost eight o'clock at night. You know that they're going to be up first thing in the morning because they're going to wake you up because their snow plows are going to be scraping the roads in front of your house. And you know what? These guys get the job done. So, you know, I've been your liaison for fifteen years, and I can't thank you enough for, I say this all the time, you guys make us look good. You know, it's not about us, it's about you. It is so easy for us to do our job because all we do is get complimented about how beautiful our community looks, how the snow is picked up immediately. You know what? Where, I talk to family and friends who live around the country. You talk to people who live in California, and you tell them, you know what, yeah, the garbage, the sanitation guys come to my house five days a week. What are you talking about? They can't believe that. They're going to my backyard and actually pulling garbage from my backyard. It's just, you don't get that kind of service. And I know these folks and the people who live here, they know them. They know Claudio when they see Claudio out in front of the house. So, you know what, it's like, it's a family. It's not a huge group of men who are working down there. But let me tell you what, the men who work for this department do the work of probably a crew twice their size. And for that, I want to thank you as a taxpayer, but I certainly want to thank you as an administrator here. So we really appreciate it.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andy.
In favor.
In favor.
Very much in favor, and thank you again. Appreciate it. So resolution number five is authorizing the modification of salary for maintenance person to seventy-one thousand and four dollars, retroactive to June one, two thousand eighteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So discussion on that, the maintenance person is actually an individual that works in our police department. And although they are not members of the four fifty-six collective bargaining agreement, they share in the same salary, so we have to actually have a separate resolution for that.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number six is approving vouchers in the amount of five hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to our departmental reports of the board, and we are going to start with Lieutenant Larry Rota.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board.
Good evening, Larry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Larry. Small report tonight. As many of the residents have seen, we've been doing a lot of commercial vehicle enforcement throughout the village. The village consists of a main truck thoroughfare. Based on complaints, we had sent officers to training specifically for commercial vehicle enforcement. We've had three separate dates this year that we've done it, and so far, we've issued a hundred and three violations to truckers for numerous violations of dangerous items and also normal VNT violations. The village attorney will be soon seeing those happy drivers coming through, but overall, it's a good thing for the village. We really are trying to make sure that every truck here that's coming through the village is safe. Secondly, we also have some, several speed monitoring devices. We've been strategically placing throughout the village on posts, and that gives us the ability to, one, track the speed the cars are traveling on the roadway. two months, starting the year, for, uh, making sure the streets are safe.
That's great.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, I just wanna comment on that. I was, um, the unit was dispatched to Garrett today, and, um, it's amazing the amount of commercial vehicles that are obviously in violation, or at the very least, it's very reassuring to know that our police department is ensuring that these commercial vehicles are in compliance. Um, so I greatly appreciate the work of, of the department in that, in that regard.
And also during this, we're not just issuing out sums, we're also giving literature out, and we're speaking to the drivers to let them know what, uh, you know, the laws are regarding, you know, smoke and noise and, and dangerous items not strapped to the vehicles. So it's also a campaign to let drivers know, uh, the laws governing them.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant.
And you know what's the side benefit of all this? With a, almost if you have a zero tolerance for the trucks that are coming through, to make sure that they're not overweight and that, uh, they're, uh, passed their safety check, what happens is that the word gets around, and we don't have as much truck traffic coming through the village of Tocco. They're gonna go through, they're gonna find another way to get from this side of the county to that side of the county, 'cause right now, they go right up and down Main Street. And that's always been an issue for us. So I have, you know, no, no tear coming from me about them going to another municipality. I know they can't make it under your bridge, Mary Marvin, so I know that they're not going there.
The only way to enter the center of, uh, Eastchester or, or through the village is either coming off of, uh, Tocco Road from eighty-seven, or coming from White Plains down, White Plains Road. So we do see a significant amount of vehicles coming through. Um, so we're, we're out there, and we're doing our best to try to control it, and also teach the drivers the safety aspect of it.
Yeah, that's great.
Doesn't help our streets, either.
No, that's right.
The weight of those trucks are not, Frank could tell you, they're not good for the sewer system, they're not good for the asphalt. Um, so, overall, it's, it's a good thing for the village.
Absolutely. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Uh, Frankie? I hope those guys are all going home, going to bed right now. That's all I can say.
I just wanna honor, you know, Patrick Burtark also, you know, as a grand marshal. I think it's well deserved. You know, he does a lot for our community, and he's just a great guy. But he's very deceitful when he says that we have fun, we have fun at the, the Italian-Irish golf outing. Uh, it's a, it's an Irish organization that started this. I'm just trying to draw the picture. And, um, he allowed the Italians to win the first year, and allowed the Irish to win the next four years. So I think it's very fixed. So it's something that we need to work on. Um, I just wanna talk a little bit about what's going on in the village. There's a lot of overhead work that's been going on. Um, but I wanna start with the Columbus Avenue, uh, MTA fence project that we've been working on. And I'm still getting questions that are being asked about what we're doing. Uh, clearly, uh, you know, no one's really recognized it, except for the homes that are across the street from this overgrowth.
Except for Steve Celestino.
Steve Celestino, especially, yes.
Steve is not the only one.
No, I know that.
And rightfully so, you know. They live across from this area. We don't. We just pass by it. Uh, but the, it, it's so much overgrowth that it actually looked like, uh, native vegetation. I mean, it, it looked good. We had to trim weeds every year. Uh, what happened was that we had arbovites that were lined up against the fence for many years. Probably twenty years back, we had to put these arbovites in place. But unfortunately, what MTA does is they spray their overgrowth, and spraying our arbovites that are along their fence line. And what, what has it done? It's killed all of our arbovites. So over the years, the weeds have grown through them, around them, over them, and we've been trimming weeds, not knowing what to do, because it created a buffer for the homes that were there. So all they knew that there was a buffer between the train and themselves. Um, so we've met with them, uh, us meaning the board, uh, we met with the homeowners there, maybe four or five months ago, and we've decided that we're gonna take all the overgrowth, all the dead arbovites down, and we're gonna start from scratch. And that's what we did. Um, so the past month or so, uh, DPW has gone in there and started removing all the overgrowth, and, and really dug out all the root system of the dead trees, trees that were growing through fence line there, into MTA. Uh, we also need MTA to help us out, because there's a lot of, um, vegetation that grows very aggressively in the back. So we need them to work in conjunction with us. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna clean the area up, and we're looking to take on creating sidewalk pathway along the fence line. The sidewalk will be five feet away from the fence, keeping our new shrubs closer to the street line. So if MTA does spray their overgrowth, it won't affect our new planting, our new urban forestry. And, uh, we're gonna be, I'm gonna be working with Sandy Reyes, uh, we might line it with, uh, maple trees, or, or maybe some of the trees that are there presently right now. But that's our plan. You know, we're looking to develop that whole area. We're looking to create a canopy of trees, like you have in Columbus from, um, Main Street to, say, uh, Circuit?
Mm-hmm. That's right.
It's a canopy of trees. That's a canopy of the same trees that we might be putting down at the other end.
Do you think they'd paint the fence?
I don't, I don't think MTA is really gonna be doing much. Uh, me and David, David and I had spoke about maybe getting some summer help, just throw some paint on there.
Maybe the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, you think MTA'd let them paint?
They'd paint outside.
They would probably ask for flagmen.
Yeah, at, at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour.
They're gonna be asking for, but I like to work with them and see what they will work with us on, uh, that'll help enhance, you know, the general area. Because we're looking to get the Crestwood Train Station done soon. I know they're gonna get in there very soon, and they're gonna upgrade our train station. So in doing that, maybe we could get them to work on the rest of the corridor, you know, working our way down Columbus Avenue. But the area that we're gonna, that we're working on presently, it's, I think, between Parkview and Dante. So it's that general area of Columbus Avenue that we're working on. We're looking to, uh, renovate sidewalks and trees. So right now, it looks pretty bare. We're taking a lot of the dead trees that are down there now. We're also working in pruning a lot of the trees in Tocco. I know we've been, people are misconstruing us with Con Edison and Altice that's out there, and us that are doing a lot of the pruning in the village. People are asking us, "Why are we pruning beautiful trees?" But every seven years or so, these trees end up with dead limbs. The dead limbs are very dangerous, except, especially areas where there are high-traffic pedestrians walking alongside. So the corridor in Columbus Avenue between Main Street and, uh, Circuit, Dante, we're pruning all those trees presently. They look bare right now, but when the spring months come around and the summer months, they grow really quick. And we have to prune them away from the existing buildings that are there, like Al Cower, Roma's, uh, the community center, public library. So we do this every seven years or so. So we end up going around and making it really safer for the pedestrians and those who use our-
God bless you.
Going back, Con Edison is also doing tree trimming and pruning. With that said, you know, you know, people say, "Why do they create such a mess with these trees when they prune them?" You know, it's really a combination of two things. The wrong tree being placed under the wires in the wrong time. We don't really look at it until they grow to their fullest height, and we need to protect the power that's going to everybody's home. So in doing that, you know, I try to follow these men. Sometimes I can't be there, there every day, but I try to explain to Con Edison what I'm looking for. You know, I don't want any overpruning, and I want them to understand that we're a small community, and we can't, we can't create such an eyesore that a lot of this pruning creates for us. So, you know, I do work with Con Edison when they come through the village like this, and they do let me know that they are, you know, in the area. Altice is, is another company. Altice is Cable Vision. They're presently running all their fiber optics cables in the low-voltage line of all the utility poles. Uh, they presently completed running all their lines, but you'll see the trucks parked on corners, wires that are hanging from utility poles, that looks like an eyesore also, and people must say to themselves, "You know, what's going on? This is like old wires that are just hanging here. Could someone just please go around and cut them all?" But those wires that are hanging need to be spliced by Altice, and that's why they're hanging there. The trucks are placing themselves for a day or two, and they're splicing these fiber optics in the trucks. So that's why they're, they're planted, you know, throughout our village. Uh, a lot of my concerns, and, and David and I had met with them just last week, was the hanging wires. Um, wires left, left in a sloppy, unraveled look. And there's some other issues that, you know, we have hanging wires that have been, that crossing our intersection, I, I think on Lake Avenue, crossing Main Street, and their main wire is hanging on our traffic light. Uh, so when all the, the fiber optics were moved over the pedestrian bridge, we asked them to install underground conduit, so they could finally get to this wire that's hanging over our traffic light. So these are some of the things that we're working on with Altice. They are making their jobs much neater, and they're almost complete. They'll probably be out here for another three weeks or so. Winter Hill Road. We're meeting, uh, we, David and I, again, have been meeting with, um, Con Edison on Winter Hill Road. We didn't get to paving the road, because there's a lot of damage that was created to our underground infrastructure, our sewer system. There were areas that have collapsed, there were areas that were compromised. So we gave them an estimate of what it would cost to repair the work to our liking. Uh, so we're waiting for them to get back to us. Once that work is completed, a lot of these areas need to be re-excavated, and then once it's re-excavated and the piping is done correctly, then the road will be paved. I'm looking to get it paved, possibly early to late spring.
Okay, that's good.
DPW will be closed tomorrow, uh, in recognition of President's Day, and the nineteenth, which is next Tuesday also, for Lincoln's birthday. This is a Tuesday, so it's, it's yard waste, electronics. We usually carry it over to Thursday, if not, we'll just get it the following week.
But I, something tells me they're all gonna be working tomorrow.
Yes. Yeah.
And happy about it, too.
I, I think that when I don't give Joe Rails' report, we have a better year. Um, but no, we're, we're having a good year so far, and, and I'm hoping that, you know, we really don't have that much snow.
Uh, just a couple of things I wanna talk about. First is the, uh, on Columbus Avenue alongside that fence. Um, uh, you know, you and I have both been around for a while, and I'll tell you what, uh, to get some sidewalks in there is gonna be such an improvement for our customers. Our customers are people who pay us to park along, um, where those meters are. So, you know, we all see them walking out in the street when there's a lot of snow, you know, there's a, or, or when that growth was, uh, prohibiting them from walking along that fence line. So now, for them to be able to walk on the sidewalk and not out on the road is really gonna be a big thing. That's, yeah, a big safety concern.
Yeah, I was driving down Columbus, and I saw people walking on the sidewalk further down. And I said, "Wow, I can't wait until they're walking on the sidewalks closer to Main Street."
Just clearing all that shrubbery has made a big difference.
Yeah, it has.
It really opened it up, that's for sure. Um, the P-word, I hate to bring it up, potholes.
Um, yeah, we got Jefferson. We, um, the blacktop plant just opened up last week.
Oh, did?
Yeah, so, um, that's why we really couldn't get to, to much of the potholes. Uh, we started extensively last, the end of last week, and now we're just preparing for snow, so.
Yeah.
You know, once we're out there plowing, we just rip these potholes right back open again. But right after that, we're looking to get out there and aggressively-
Good.
-take care of the potholes. Uh, you know, we, we do have loose blacktop that we, in case of an emergency, they come out of bags, they're not from the plant.
Right.
But if you do get something that's dangerous or in a crosswalk, we out, we are out there with these, these bags of blacktop, doing patchwork.
Excellent. Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank.
Camille, anything? Okay, Gary, anything at all? Uh, David? Anything for us tonight?
I got a, a couple of different things. Um, last week, a member of the public asked about the may, or the Elm Street Bridge project that's going over the Bronx River Parkway, and, uh, I talked to the county this past week, or last week, yep. Um, they did say that the project is on schedule, their schedule. I know that. It didn't look like there was some work going on down there, but, uh, they told me that the, the contract for the project was signed in September of last year. After that, um, some mobilization from like, some stream bank stabilization, some other protective measures for the, um, the stream was done down there. Then you saw one lane closed. Um, they ripped up a, a fair portion of it and, um, did some, uh, cap beam, a poured-the-cap beam, a concrete cap beam, which takes twenty-eight days to cure, depending on some of the weather. So that is actually coming up near the twenty-eight days. They're waiting on the arch, so, uh, the arch is actually gonna come in one big piece that's gonna be delivered in the next couple of weeks. That's gonna be on one side. They need to do some weatherproofing, some other improvements to that side, um, and they look to close the other side, and that's gonna be about April. So we'll get a lot more information in the next couple of months when that's gonna happen, but the other side's gonna be closed, and a lot of people really need to know that they can't get on the Bronx River Parkway that way. So we'll make sure that we know exact date and get that out there. But, um, as far as I'm told, it is moving along, and it should be done by June seventeenth. That's their words. We'll hold them to it and see what we can do.
They were there today.
Um-
Yeah, they actually were there, working today.
They were working on it today?
Well, there were three construction workers there today.
They were doing something. Um, the next piece of information I have is actually, uh, the board hasn't even heard this yet, so we actually got some information in regards to the P site late last week. Um, I actually have in my hands, I guess, uh, you know, what we would say is an executive-executive summary of it. Uh, apparently, it's around fourteen-hundred pages, the whole P site report. Um, so it's going to take some time. This doesn't mean any determination was made, it just means the report is finalized, and I guess DEC and DOH then have to go through the report and make a determination. So if everyone remembers, we have P sites, two P sites north of the hotel site, two P sites south. At this point, they need to make a determination of each of those parcels, and they can make a determination any which way on each of those parcels, so we're gonna wait to see what they have to do. Um, we are going to see what we can get up on our website. I'm not sure if fourteen-hundred pages is gonna be available. Um, I'm not sure if everyone needs to see data tables of thousands of pages of data tables, but, um, I'd like to make it available if anyone wants to look at it, or if anyone requests it. I think maybe we should go that route of having it on a CD, so that's up to, um, we'll, we'll determine that, but again, that was just kinda put in my hands right now. Um, and the last thing is, um, community forums have become very popular, and these are one of the things that actually allow us to get into the resident's head and understand what they're looking for. And one of the things we've noticed is that people are very interested in renting out their driveways to commuters in residential zones. That is not permitted. It is a residential zone, it's not a commercial zone, and you cannot rent out your driveway. Um, I know that is a, it's a hot topic. If we had everybody running out their driveways, we'd have thousands more cars in Tocco. Every resident would park on the road, and everybody would be, you know, commuters would be parking in their driveway. So that is not allowed. It's illegal. Um, we're gonna work to try to maybe get that on our website to make sure, but that's Every resident would park on the road, and everybody would be, you know, commuters would be parking in their driveway. So that is not allowed. It's illegal. We're going to work to try to maybe get that on our website to make sure, but that's something that we're going to be focusing in on in the next few months to make sure that people aren't doing this, because we know, we have seen it's a problem where people are getting their commuter passes or their residential passes, parking on the road, and then having commuters in their driveway, which is not the purpose of, you know, having trouble.
How do you find out about that? Does somebody send you like an anonymous tip or something?
There are, there's community forums now, so I think one's like a Bronxville forum and things like that. So it's out there. Yep. So we monitor those types of things. I mean, people put that kind of stuff on Facebook.
Big Brothers watch.
You know, Big Brothers is always watching. So it's just something that we would just want to make everybody aware that you're not supposed to be doing that.
Okay, good. All right. So miscellaneous business, our next village board meeting, which will be my last village board meeting and Tom's last village board meeting, is going to be on Monday, March 11, 2019. So don't be late. I won't be late. We won't be late. Board of trustees member reports. We will start with my and your deputy mayor, Mr. Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Steve. I'll keep my comments brief this evening. I can't promise the same thing next month, but at which time, I'll acknowledge Larry and Chief Costanzo and Frank and all the other great people that we have working for our village. And of course, our three favorite, Camille, David, and Gary. But I just wanted to mention briefly that our planning board meeting is canceled for this month. The next meeting will be on March 20th, and the, the public, sorry, the work session will be on the 5th, March 5th. The zoning board meeting will be on February 13th, this Wednesday, at 7:30, and the work session is at 6:45 PM. Speaking of the P-words, I wanted to mention the word, a more favorable word, which is Pocket Park. On February 23rd at 11:00 AM, there will be the dedication of the Pocket Park in Crestwood, which is a beautiful example of some of the great work that the men that we saw at DPW and Frank have done for our community. So just be a nice event to come to and see the great things that are done here. That's all I have.
Will, and I'm looking forward to that, too. Thank you very much. Trustee Greg Louisi.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tocco seniors had the misfortune of being displaced from Father Hall due to a broken boiler, which I understand has been repaired, and they should be back at Father Father Hall this week, presuming closed tomorrow. But they will be back in Father Father Hall. And Jennifer Vetromile just wanted me to once again thank the village and David for, you know, bending over backwards to get them the space that they so desperately need in the community center for the time that they needed to hold their meetings. The seniors recognize Black History Month with a showing of the movie Ray, which was about the life of the musician Ray Charles, a role for which Jamie Foxx won an Oscar. Then on February 19th, Trish Chambers will be visiting the Tocco seniors to discuss and talk about the legends of the Freedom Quilt and the Underground Railroad. And lastly, the seniors will be celebrating Valentine's Day on Valentine's Day with a Valentine luncheon from Mama Rosunta. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to say two things. First of all, that movie is one of my favorite.
Sure is, yeah.
I was on a plane a couple of weeks ago, watched it again. It is an unbelievable meeting, if anyone, a movie if anyone wants or hasn't seen it, they should absolutely see it. And since you're the only member on this board who's actually, nobody said, hey, we're going to miss you. It's because trustee Louisi is running for this seat right here, which is for Tocco mayor, so.
Well, that's not to say that next month may not be my last meeting as well.
Well, we wish you all the best.
We'll save those comments until next month.
All right, good. But yeah, we do wish you all the best.
Yes, thank you for letting the public know.
Trustee Andino.
So the library, as you all know, and I say every month, has a robust program. So I encourage everyone to go on the website and to look for some specific activities that might be of interest to you. For the month of February, I'll just highlight a few. There is a financial literacy workshop. I would encourage residents to attend. The topic is Know Your Tax 2019. And if anybody's paying attention, you know that there are a lot of new changes, and there's a Ryan Regano will be available to explain the new tax code. And these are free workshops, so I encourage people to attend them. Also, in recognition of Black History Month, on Monday, February 25th, Shiloh Baptist Church Choir will provide an evening of song at the community center at 6 o'clock. So come out and enjoy that. And also Concordia Conservatory will have African folktales for ages four to 10 years old, which is sponsored by the Community Fund on Tuesday, February 26 at 4:00 PM. So if you have an opportunity to come out to some of these events, and there are a lot of different events going on in the county in recognition of Black History Month, I would encourage everyone to go out and participate. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Trustee Danny Wang.
Yeah, I just want to, again, congratulate Patrick Murtaugh, the work that he does, and all the folks up there in East Chester. He's incredible. So congratulations with, you know, him being the grand marshal, and we hope to see everybody at that St. Patrick's Day parade. In addition to that, a very special event is the Shiloh Baptist Brotherhood Breakfast is coming up on the 16th at 9:00 AM, and that's always a great event. And that's it. Good things going on here at Tocco. God bless. Oh, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Very true. Thank you. So I just have a couple of things. I want to mention that Concordia College sent a letter out last week. They distributed, I know, to most of the folks who were here earlier this evening, where they are actually getting ready to start their project on their field there on Rose Avenue. So anyone who's traveling and navigating around that area, just be careful. In addition to the park dedication at the Station Plaza Park next to the Bagal Loft in Crestwood, which will be on February 23rd, we're going to have two, we're going to have one new business opening, ribbon cutting, which is the Rio Bravo, the new Mexican restaurant, which I've been there twice. It's fantastic, I have to say. And I stopped in to see an old friend of mine who's been in that area for a very, very long time, Frank, everybody knows Frank, our cobbler, Crestwood Shoe Repair. And I said, hey, Frank, we never did any kind of, you know, certainly not a ribbon cutting, but any kind of a recognition. I'd like to, while we're down here, let's bring our video guy inside and kind of show this neat little shop. So he's a very shy guy, but he said yes. So I'm really looking forward to that. I think that's going to, that's going to be a great day. So that's going to be on February 23rd. I want to congratulate the Tocco cheerleading teams. I heard, I got a text message yesterday that we have, the Village of Tocco has a world championship cheerleading squad, which is just incredible. When you think about how small the Village of Tocco is, to be able to get that recognition on the worldwide stage, not the national stage, I think is fantastic. So I think there's going to be maybe a parade coming. I think they just flew back today, so we'll have more information on that coming up. You never made the cheerleading squad, huh?
I did. I was on the cheerleaders. I was.
Were you?
I sure was. What better way to get a front-row seat to a football game? And meet girls?
Good point, good point.
Those were the good old days of high school. Catholic High School, so I don't want yous all thinking.
So I have a certificate of recognition that I'm going to issue, and I've done an awful lot of these in 15 years, but I can tell you that I've never done one like this. So I'm going to read it. The Village of Tocco Certificate of Recognition. This certificate of honorable heroism is hereby awarded to Sadie. And you can see the dog bone here. And anyone who's watched the news in the last day or two are going to know what I'm talking about. This certificate is awarded as a testimonial of loyalty and devotion to her family. Thank you, Sadie, for your heroic efforts in saving your family and community from a gas leak. And I see Larry in the back. I noticed that he was interviewed on the news the other night. So maybe you want to come up and tell us a little bit about that event, Larry? What we're going to do is we're going to present this to Sadie the dog, pit bull, I think, right?
It was a pit bull.
Yep, and so I'm going to go out and buy a box of dog biscuits, and we're going to go ahead and present this to Sadie. So maybe you tell us what happened.
It was a pretty unique situation. The dog pretty much got out of the residence, scratched its way out at the front door, and then also made its way to the rear door and bit the wood stopper. So we had gotten a call from residents on Fairway Avenue, said there was a loose pit bull running around. So we take that very seriously. We went to go try to catch the dog. And once we did that, officers chased the dog back to the residence and noticed the door was open and strong smell of gas coming out of the house. So EFD and Con Ed were immediately dispatched to the house, and the owner was notified. So it's pretty amazing what an animal can do. But it was a, it was a good story, and the press loved it. Sergeant Kennedy had put it on our Facebook page, which seems to be a pretty popular thing these days. They have a great following. He works hard at it. And they, all of a sudden, we started getting calls from the press wanting to do a story on it. So the homeowner was very appreciative.
Good.
And she also spoke to the press, and it was a good story. You see so many bad stories in the news today, so whenever there's something good.
A nice, happy ending, whether you like pit bulls or not. You know what? That dog came through. So that's fantastic. So, yeah, that's good. That's, that's very heartwarming. Yes, go Sadie. So, yep, so anyway, so this is going to be for Sadie, so. Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. All right, so as I mentioned last month, this is going to be my last term as mayor and last term for our deputy mayor, Tom Giordano. So I'm going to reserve next month's meeting. Basically, I think it's going to pretty much just be a ceremonial meeting. We may pay a bill or two, but for the most part, I think it's going to be a farewell. Tom and I certainly want to use that opportunity to thank an awful lot of people for an awful lot of years of good times, some challenging times. But you know what? We'll certainly talk more about it, but it's clearly been one of the greatest experiences of our lives, so. That's going to bring us to the second opportunity to address the board. Anybody? Yes, sir?
Mike Dardano, 62 Chester Street. I mentioned the Con Ed thing before. I just wanted to let everyone know, I don't know about this, but they were going to have two public meetings to be able to comment about the moratorium. One in Osnings, which wouldn't have done us much good from a geography standpoint, but there is going to be one on Wednesday at the White Plains Public Library from two, one will be at 2:30 PM, the other one will be at 6:30 PM. So if anybody wants to go, any businesses that are watching that want to have a public comment, the state's actually given some suggestions on what to do, one of them being five liquefied natural gas storage facilities, which will go over very well. So anyways, it's just something that if people want to go and speak, they certainly, certainly can. The other thing is, also, I'd like to thank the police for, that's awesome with the trucks.
That's fantastic.
That's just, I saw that online. I was thrilled. You're right, I think they might go all the places. So that's wonderful. Frank, also want to thank what your guys do. I mean, it is amazing. When I tell people that, people come to pick up the garbage from the thing that we have, they're shocked. They're great, it's a great, great crew. Very good. One of the other things I'd like to do, hopefully institute this, is that I'd like to give a green tip at every meeting. I think it's important, with all these things with, you know, Entergy closing and the gas thing, we really should be giving green tips. So I'm going to make one quick one right now. I apologize, my wife bought these metal straws. I don't know where she got them. I looked it up online, and it said Bed Bath &amp; Beyond.
It's funny, my wife has, she uses those also.
But I want to be able to say.
Amazon.
Yeah, but don't, Amazon is, no.
That's where people are getting them.
I would give them enough tax breaks.
That's where people are getting them, is what I'm saying.
We didn't. My wife bought it locally somewhere. So I would like to be able to, hopefully I can tell you where we bought this locally.
In Tocco?
Or East Chester, or even Bronxville. But it is at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. But I just think those kind of things, little baby steps are what we can do. It's hard to control what's going on outside of the world, but if we can give little baby steps, I think that might be very beneficial, so. And then finally, on the P sites, I'm really happy to hear that. Looking forward to, you know, seeing the information. I did notice that they had a very deep hole where the restaurant's going to be, so I'm actually going to ask Kevin Carpenter about it, because it looked like it was deeper than 15 feet. So, yeah, I'm going to ask him what his thoughts on that was, just to find out what, what's going on with that, because it's, I think that, and I can't remember, because I haven't looked at it in a while, but the cap, how far the cap is, that's below the 15 feet they were going to dig. That area was where the TCE was very high in between the gym and the brewery. So I just want to check to see what he has to say.